Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Sue Brodick.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryanchaki.
Here.
Andy Salhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Belbeer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Followed by the pledge of allegiance will have a moment of silence at the request of Councilman Ryanchaki.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the minutes from our meeting day, January 13th, 2020. They need to be approved. Are there any comments or questions? All right, I'll make the motion that we approve. Sorry.
Through the minutes, Sue Brodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryanchaki.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Epstein.
Mary Belbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
At this time, we will have a public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening. John Wagner, 4825 Bentwood Drive, Brooklyn, Ohio. Just wanted to give everybody an update on the 2020 census. We are about four weeks from being completed for the application process. It's gone extremely well, and I want to let everybody know that we are in great shape in Brooklyn. We have plenty of candidates to help us do the job. But the real work starts after that, and that's where we have to get everybody counted. And we have to make sure of that. So we have various task groups that will be going out after we don't get a complete count from the folks that didn't respond, but we'll also be chasing all the underserved communities. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that, and I'll keep you updated on it. And that's really about all I wanted to mention tonight about the census. Again, thank you for all of your help, and I'll be back begging for help as we get onto the next phase of this very important issue. Thank you.
John, hold on one second, please.
John, I'm sorry, I have one question. I had wrote this down at a previous meeting, and I could not find it. When does the online portal open so people can start filling out applications?
Yeah, the question is, when is the online portal open? It'll be the end of March is what we're anticipating. Thank you, that brought up another thought for me. We are now starting to make calls, employment calls. We started last week. We've accomplished about 350 of them. We have thousands to do. So for those of you who know people who have applied, tell them to be patient. We're going to get to virtually everybody that applied, I'm sure, because we have such a huge number, but it's going to take a little while. So the latest dates that I'm hearing is towards the end of March. We'll wait that portal will open, the actual forms will be sent. Now, they're not going to actually send printed forms this time. They're going to send you instructions how to fill it out on the portal through an 800 number or request the actual printed form. We anticipate that's going to take a couple of months for people to respond and not respond, and then probably by the early summer, we'll start doing the follow-up. But there's a whole separate campaign that will be starting shortly after the, after about towards the end of March, and that'll be starting to get to the nursing homes and some of the other areas of non-traditional housing, under bridges, all these different places will actually start fairly quickly. It'll be a whole different campaign than the more traditional follow-up on those who did not respond. So it's a big, it's a big job, and we still have a lot of people, and we'll be hiring more people to help us make sure we get it done properly. I don't have to tell you folks the importance of it, you know. We've certainly talked about it enough. Any other questions? That was guess.
When do you foresee this actually being complete?
That's a great question, okay? The goal is to be completed by September. Doubt that it'll be done by September. I think we'll probably go solidly into the fall. The law requires it's got to be on the president's desk by the end of the year. Somehow that'll get accomplished. The actual date of completion is probably somewhat in flux at this point, but we'll see how it goes. That all just depends on how many people take the opportunity to complete that form or reply in some fashion or form, and the remainder is the ones that we have to chase and follow up on. And we'll make six attempts to find everybody. We're not going to let this go lightly. We all know the economic reasons behind it and also the political reasons of making sure we have the representation for the state of Ohio. And right now, it looks like we may lose another seat, so we need to try to, try to catch up on that.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I think there's something that pretty much all of us hate doing is recycling, but I do it, and we all do it. Are they handing out any citations of law or warnings? There's mornings I walk out on garbage day, and there's several recycling bins, the lid's partially open, and there's stuff in trash, in plastic trash bags, different colors, white and blue. We give any warnings? Because I sure don't want to be having to pay for a trash pickup, because we have wonderful service now, and, you know, if the recycling gets bounced, you know, it's going to be in our pocket or something, no? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Changary. I live at 8705 Morton Avenue in our great city of Brooklyn. First off, I want to say thank you to the mayor, president of council, the new members of our council, and the existing members, our city directors. From a person that receives city services all the time and helping my mother since dad passed, I do appreciate the professionalism and the courtesy extended to her through me with the snowplow program that did help this last time when I couldn't get over there quick enough, and they did pull the snow, which I, we pay $40 for, which is nothing compared to the convenience for her to have the ability to drive out and do her shopping. Second of all, I just wanted to say, we as citizens of this great community must wrap ourselves around our public school system. I am in support of public education. I will pass all levies that come up in the future, be it renewal or new. I would not allow the current hiccup that happened on Tuesday at the public session of the new school board to tarnish anyone's opinion of why we need to vote for public education. In a nutshell, I felt like a patsy. I was trying, I have three children, I apply for IEP, which is an individualized education plan for them because of the needs that they have. I'm a strong, staunch advocate for all the children at the district. I placed their education, as my responsibility, on hold. I chose not to file complaints, and I know this is about transparency in city government. I took it upon myself to try to negotiate face-to-face. I come to the meeting Tuesday, and I find out that our superintendent, our school board, is spending in excess of $255,000 on legal fees. Now, I will tell you, in hindsight, I did file a case, I did win myself, I didn't pay any legal fees, and it did cost the city of, the schools $38,000. And all I say is, is we don't need attorneys to negotiate contracts until they're going to be ratified. If the teachers' union, which this spoke for the first time, came out of silence, because I, I'm up there all the time, and none of them violated their public trust to their bargaining commitment. But we still need the support with the levies coming up. We still need to renew them. Our children are our number-one priority. Getting back to the point, I was assured that when money was available, that the school would educate all the teachers with dyslexia and dyscolialia education. I'm a very patient man. God has taught me to be patient. But when I stood, sat there in that meeting and heard, being told in a meeting by our leader of our schools, and then hearing in a meeting the real budget, because I went and asked, and I went to the public meetings, there was no mention of $255,000 of legal fees in the budget I witnessed. If I am incorrect, I will come back and apologize. But at this point, if there's that much money to litigate a contract, then by all means, we as citizens need to call our elected officials and push for a waste, fraud, and abuse of the administration and all the unions involved in negotiations. We do not have that kind of money to just randomly give to a law firm without just cause, especially after being told for years and years and years, "We don't have the funds, Mr. Changary. Your complaint is at the state. It will fall on deaf ears." So I reached out at the last meeting when I was here, and the mayor has graced me with volunteering for committee. Thank you very much. And I went and commented to our current elected official, Sweeney, and three days later, as I stated in the school board meeting, I was called and told that we no longer need you as the surrogate parent for our district. And basically, all I would do is read documentation, make recommendations to hold our district and our teachers accountable to the student for their education. So I didn't resist. I said, "Okay," and I walked away. Well, the switch is back on, which means that after that meeting, the kids should not pay for this. I called all of my elected officials at the state and federal level, requested a waste, fraud, and abuse hearing or an investigation by the governor's office, the auditor's office, because we need to get to the bottom of this. You know, if it was $50,000, okay, I can see that, that's reasonable. But when you're talking about a quarter of a million dollars, which is 10%, if you remember, of the levy that we signed to pass for 10 years, that's not acceptable. And public accountability, I'm going to request, next time I go up to the school board meeting, and hopefully with some help from our elected officials in our electorate, will request an oversight commission set up by the electors of the city of Brooklyn to oversee this process.
Overtime, Mr. Changary.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much. God bless you all, and have a great evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? This time, we'll have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the committee at the hall. This is the first time that council has met in this committee. It's a committee of all the council members that will meet following the finance meeting right before all of our council meetings. And I'll go over the agenda this evening of what we discussed. The first two items were the notifications for two grants. The first one is for a NOPE grant for 34914. This will be pushed off until the next meeting, as we need further legislation to pass before we can be notified of this grant. The second was a donation of $1,000 from a new business here in the city of Brooklyn, TAP Packaging Design. They took over the old Hugo Boss facility there, and that money will be used for our Shop With A Cop program that will take place later on this year during the Christmas season. So of course, we're very grateful for TAP Packaging for that donation. Under legislation, the first item ordinance is 2019-53. This establishes the full-time position of Economic Development Director and City Planner for the city of Brooklyn. Currently, this position is a part-time position, as it reads now. This ordinance would make it a full-time position, and the salary range would be between $61,391 and $110,000 annually. Ordinance 2019-54, this authorizes the merit entering agreement for the transfer of city of Brooklyn land and property on Memphis Road to Cuyahoga County for $71,500. And this is located approximately where Kitty Park is there. They're going to be expanding the roadway and the bridge there, and so they are paying the city $71,500 for the portion of land that we own that they'll need for this expansion. Ordinance 2020-1, promoting clean and health parks by enacting Section 521.101 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances. This is non-smoking in parks. What this ordinance would do is would ban all smoking in all city parks, and that would include inhaling, exhaling, or carrying any lighted cigar, cigarette, pipe, weed, plant, or other lighted or vaporized substance in any manner or form, including marijuana used for medical purposes. So basically, no smoking in the parks will be what this ordinance does. It's on second reading, so it will be adopted, if it goes through, it'll be voted on, I should say, at our February 10th meeting. Ordinance 2020-4, establishing the position of a part-time recreation supervisor for facilities and programs. This will be on the same level as the supervisor for the aquatics position, will take the place of the assistant pool manager title. And then lastly, is ordinance, was ordinance 2020-5. This establishes the Brooklyn Summer Camp Program within the Recreation Department and appeals to previous ordinances that have to do with that. And this is a new summer program that the Recreation Department is rolling out, and it's a little bit of an expansion on this. Jeff, were you going to talk about this in a report tonight, or do you want me to go over this?
Either way, son.
All right, I'll let you do it, since this is your baby. All right, so we talked about that, but the, the program will start on June the 8th and will run through August the 14th, and Mr. Brusie will discuss more about that when he gives his report a little bit later on. Then the mayor gave us an update on the master plan, and that is moving, continuing to move forward. We're still in the, we wouldn't say the early phases of that, but we're still on kind of early on in the, in that process, and so it's moving forward. And then she also gave us an update on a civil service exam. It looks like we'll possibly be having a new sergeant that will be replacing another one, the one that's retiring here shortly. So as I mentioned before, the committee of the hall meets in the city hall conference room. It meets following the finance meeting, which starts at 6:15. We don't have exact time on that, because we don't know how long the finance meeting's going to go, but all are welcome to attend that meeting. Next up, we'll have a recreation board. Representative Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The next recreation board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 19th, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryanchaki.
Thanks. The commission held a meeting last week. Colleen Rieli Shapiro was our guest speaker, informing the commission on the Cuyahoga County Domestic Relations Court. We also discussed our 2020 agenda, including doing another event with Michaels and Ridge Perk Square in April, and hopefully an event in June with our senior center. Stay tuned as these events get closer and more details are figured out. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up, legislative update, Councilman Belbeer.
Thank you. Ohio continues to rank poorly on a national survey when it comes to traffic safety laws. Ohio ranked near the bottom in the annual report of advocates for highway and auto safety, a nonprofit in Washington that advocates for stricter traffic laws. Areas that caused Ohio driving laws to rank poorly include seat belts. The study faults Ohio for not requiring people in both the front and back to wear seat belts. In Ohio, only drivers and passengers in the front seat must wear them. The study also faults Ohio for not making the failure to wear a seat belt a primary offense, which would allow police to pull someone over and ticket them solely for not wearing one. Right now, Ohio provides for a ticket for not wearing the belt, only if pulled over for some other reason. The study also faults Ohio for not requiring all riders on a motorcycle to wear helmets. Right now, Ohio only requires helmets for operators and passengers who are 18 or younger or for operators who have been licensed for less than a year. Ohio is also criticized for issuing learner's permits to drivers younger than 16 years old. In Ohio, teens can get a learner's permit at 15 and 1/2. It also faults Ohio for not, for how it restricts nighttime driving for drivers under 18. Ohio's nighttime restrictions begin at midnight, where the study favors restrictions starting at 10:00 PM, like most states. Ohio lawmakers are considering raising the licensing age from 16 to 16 and 1/2 and moving the nighttime restrictions to 10:00 PM, but the bill is languishing in the House. As to texting while driving, it is illegal, but like the seat belt, the study faults Ohio for not making it a primary offense. Representative Lightbody, a Columbus Democrat, introduced a bill this month making texting a primary offense, and Governor DeWine announced his support for that premise. But the bill has no Republican cosponsors, a bad sign for it getting through the Republican-controlled legislature. One traffic bill that looks like it will be a law is House Bill 129, which legalizes the use of earplugs by motorcyclists. It also specifies bikers could also wear earphones while riding, but only if they're used for hearing protection and not entertainment. The purpose of the bill is that earplugs can protect bikers from the effects of constant wind noise while still allowing them to hear car horns, emergency vehicle sirens, and other loud noises while driving. Similar bills have been introduced in recent years, but failed to make it through the legislative process. This House Bill 129 was approved by the House and now awaits Governor DeWine's signature. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet this evening at 6:15. I already went over all the items that we discussed in the committee of the hall. Many of them were discussed in the Finance Committee as well. The Finance Committee did recommend approval of ordinances 2019-53, 2019-54, and ordinances 2020-5. Again, the Finance Committee does meet it now at 6:15 in the city hall conference room prior to our committee of the hall meeting. Next up is our Planning Commission, Councilman Sue Rook.
Thank you. The Planning Commission's next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 6, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room. Right now on the agenda are two items, a request from Premier Brooklyn LLC for lot consolidation at 4650 Tiedemann Road, and a request from Premier Brooklyn LLC for site approval for Ruane at 4650 Tiedemann Road. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, our school board liaison, Councilman Mary Belbeer.
Thank you. The school board approved a resolution to enter into an agreement with Lorain Community College for students participating in College Credit Plus. This is a wonderful opportunity, because Lorain County Community College has a partnership with Cleveland State University to streamline enrollment from Lorain Community College to earn a bachelor's degree from CSU. College Credit Plus is a program that allows Ohio students in grades 7 through 12 the opportunity to earn college and high school credit at the same time by taking college classes at no cost to the student. Also during the meeting, during the public session, a number of teachers got up and expressed their concerns. If you'd like to view that, you can view that on YouTube and visit that site. Some upcoming events, the next school board meeting is Wednesday, January 29th at 6:00 PM in the Treasurer's Conference Room. Levy Finance Forum on February 12th in the auditorium. Brooklyn Athletic Boosters Night will be at Athens Race, the Races, and the races will be on February 29th. Tickets can be purchased at the school board. School board meeting February, will be February 18th at 6:00 PM in the Media Center. The school musical is Newsies, which will start March 12th, 13th, and 14th. This past weekend, the school sponsored a wonderful spaghetti dinner from what I've been heard, what I, people have been telling me. And just if you're curious as to where all that money that they raise at that kind of a function, it goes to the support of the levy. It goes to advertisement for the billboard, it goes for advertisement and direct mailings for support of the levies. And that pretty much concludes my report. Thank you.
The Public Safety and Environmental Committee will meet immediately following our next council meeting on February the 10th to discuss two items. One is new legislation regarding short-term rentals here in the city of Brooklyn, Airbnb, Verba, places like that. And we will also be discussing a potential dog park here in the city of Brooklyn. This is something that's been discussed in the past, and we are, have a plan that we'd like to discuss with the committee and council, and so everyone is welcome to attend. That will be following our next council meeting on February the 10th. We'll now move on to reports of council, begin this evening with Mrs. Rook.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm excited to return to the Planning Commission as council representative, and I just wanted to give an update on Swenson's. A few residents have asked what's going on, so I asked Building Commissioner Colisgar for an update. The Planning Commission approved plans for the daycare to move to Good Shepherd Church Building on Memphis Avenue, and we did that at the September 5th, 2019 meeting. So as of right now, demolition on the, for the existing building on Ridge Road is set to begin in April, and Swenson's will be hoping, is hoping to be in operation at the end of summer. And one of the many things that I noticed while walking door to door in our community is how many people take pride in their, the appearance of their residents. Like many homeowners in Brooklyn, I recently received information regarding the 2020 exterior property management grant, and I'd like to be the first one, I think, tonight to thank Mayor Gallagher and all involved in bringing the successful 2019 grant program into 2020. I think all of us agree that our, our houses are important to us, and I hope many homeowners will apply. If you didn't notice that mailing last week, please take a look, maybe through your junk mail, and open it up. I'm sure we'll be hearing more in February about the grant, but the applications will be accepted March 1st through June 1st, and I hope many homeowners will apply. And my last thing is, I would like to thank TAP for the donation. As a teacher in our schools, I know firsthand how much the Shop With A Cop program is appreciated. It's appreciated by the students, and it's appreciated by the families, and it is a wonderful, wonderful experience for the students. Every year, I've had the opportunity to have at least one child in my classroom participate, and they come back to school that Monday, so excited, not only for the gifts that they receive and the opportunity to shop, but also to spend a morning with our police officers in Brooklyn. So thanks. You'll be so happy that many more of our students will have the opportunity to shop than would have without your donation. So thank you for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Ryanchaki.
March 17th is the primary for Ohio. Local issues on the ballot include Local Issue 25, which is the Brooklyn School Levy. This is renewal, not a tax increase. And then Issue 33 is a replacement and increase for the Cuyahoga County Health and Human Service Levy. If approved, the owner of a $100,000 home would pay $41 more annually, beginning in 2021, for a total of about $164. Forty, sorry, 41. Yeah. The current levy generates $105 million per year. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Salhertz.
No report.
Okay. Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I wasn't at the last meeting because I was sick, so I would like to offer my condolences to the Frye family on the passing of Mary Frye and to the Hilberg family on the passing of Keri. We've known both families for many, many years, and they've all been in my prayers. And I'd also like to thank TAP Packaging for their generous donation to the Shop With A Cop. As Mrs. Brodick mentioned, it's really, it has such an impact on the students, and it was very generous of them as a new member of our community. And I'd also like to welcome Mrs. Brodick to city council. We've known each other for many years, and I look forward to working with you. As Ms. Ryanchaki mentioned, Issue 25 is the school renewal. It is a renewal, no new taxes. It's very critical to our community that this passes. There is some good news. We're kind of experiencing levy fatigue because of how all the renewals were bunched together, and then there was also an increase. So the good news is, if this passes in March, we'll have a couple years where there will not be a levy on the ballot. So I think we'll, we're all be happy for that. But it is very important that this pass. Last Saturday, I attended the spaghetti dinner fundraiser for the Support Our Schools Committee. It was a very nice affair, and I would just like to thank all the volunteers who worked very hard to put it on, and also everyone who donated a door prize. And I'd also like to thank all those who spoke this evening from the public. And that, oh, Mr. Verba, maybe when it's time for the directors, you could answer Mr. Ardito's question about the recycling. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Mrs. Belbeer.
Thank you. Just to add a few things that Ms. Brodick mentioned about the exterior property maintenance grants, grant that our city provides, it's up to $3,000 for the residents, but it's to make exterior repairs, so please keep that in mind. And there are a couple things, guidelines that they follow. So make sure when you're filling it out, that you fill the entire application out. And, and a few things about the applications, they're going to be ranked, and, and there are certain guidelines that they follow. So make sure you follow directions and that it's all, all complete. And like I said, if there's any kind of questions, always call our building department for that.
And also with the grant application, there was another letter that came in telling residents about the housing assistance programs that are also offered. And one in particular that I find extremely interesting, and I always think that maybe I just might do, but I haven't gotten a numption to do it yet, is the Heritage Home Program. And that program helps provide funds for residents to modernize our older homes and make them more energy efficient. And I do live in an older home. It might be above 55, 60 years old, I think, and I've always kind of nudged my husband, maybe we ought to look into that. So maybe that might be something you might be interested in, too. And if you're interested in that, you can reach, talk to somebody at the Heritage place at 4263116. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Ms. Tansky.
Well, my first question was answered by Councilwoman Grodick, so Swenson, so that takes care of that. The second one I have, though, is the recycling. Mr. Verba, can you, I don't know if you have it with you, but can you give us the amount of tonnage that we are taking to the city of Cleveland, either monthly or yearly? Second thing is, do we have an update on if all the recyclable containers are coming out on the front lawn? Do we have a percentage of all residents that are recycling? Some, half, all, every week? And I guess the second one is, I know Cleveland had some major issues on what's going in those containers. Now, are we monitoring in Brooklyn what's going in those containers? I know we were big on the pizza boxes not going in there, that was a big one, but I think there's other stuff being thrown in there. I don't know, I just have this feeling things are sticking out of that container that I see going down the street, any recyclables, but if you could give us an update on that, what we're doing, how we're handling, I'd appreciate it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tansky. At this time, we'll turn it over to the mayor. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. I just have two small items. As the council president mentioned, I did give a master plan update, and that was that the county planning commission came to meet with the project team, which is myself and the directors of the city. They did go over an update of where the master plan was after the public session and the feedback from the public and the follow-up survey, which they did say our follow-up survey online got a huge response, much more than they typically see as far as a percentage of our residents. So thank you for those who took the time to fill out those surveys. And so what they did is get our feedback and ask some questions to us as far as going through that process. And from there, what will happen is the Planning Commission will keep this, measure all the data, look at what residents said a little bit further, and they're going to synthesize that data into some recommendations from them as planners from there. At that point, at the end of February, hopefully, we'll get a report from them, and then I'll kick it back out to the public for the public to take a view of it, add more recommendations, or see what they think of the county planning commission's recommendations, and then the process will continue from there. As far as the census, you know, I appreciate that we have you, John, coming up here and mentioning this, and, you know, we talk about the economic benefit of it. I just implore you to make sure you fill out the census. If someone's temporarily living with you through that period of time, count them. If your kids are away at college and they have the intent to come back here, make sure you count them. Every person matters when we're filing for the census, not only for our community, but for the region. This is how the federal government determines how much money comes to our region in the state of Ohio. Again, just as you said, the political structure of our voting rights, so it's important. I just, I truly, I could tell you that I was naive to this process up until this point, and how critically important this process is to really the funding of futures for the next decade. So please make sure you're counting everyone in your house. If you need help, come up to City Hall, we'll be more than happy to help you. Go online if you want to try to fill it out online, just to have access to a computer or over a senior center. The last thing I have is our state senator, Nikki Antonio, will be holding the state of the 23rd District, which we belong, on Saturday, February 1st at 11:00 AM at the Parma Snow Branch of the Cuyahoga County Public Library in Conference Room B. She'll talk about healthcare, education, transportation, and some other factors playing out in the State House right now. She'll also have a question and answer session, so it's a good opportunity for you to go meet her, ask any particular questions. So again, that's February 1st, 11:00 AM at the Parma Snow Branch Library. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Director's reports this evening, we'll begin with our Rec Commissioner, Mr. Abruzi.
Thank you. So we are moving from, this is regarding summer camp in 2020, 2020. So we are moving from a six-week, six-hour-a-day camp to a nine-week, eight-hour-a-day camp with the option of before care and after care. We are excited to do so. We're partnering with the Brooklyn City School District and St. Thomas More School. The program will be housed at both St. Thomas More facilities, Brooklyn Recreation Center, and the parks, and our other recreation facilities as well. We will be taking weekly field trips, as typical summer camps do. A little different this year, we're going to be breaking up the day into sort of two portions. First half is going to be the education and enrichment portion. The cool part of this is that the St. Thomas More faculty and staff, or some of them at least, will be helping St. Thomas More students with their summer education and reading program, and the Brooklyn School District is going to be supplying teachers and faculty to help with any Brooklyn City School students that will be in the program to work on their summer reading and educational needs throughout the camp. So that's a unique thing, not a lot of cities do that, so we're really excited about that with that partnership. The second portion of the day is going to be the activity portion, where the kids do, you know, the traditional summer camp thing, sports, gym games, craft, nature walks, swimming, ice skating. And then our camp staff with the Recreation Department is going to be helping to oversee that for the most part. The camp will start June 8th, runs all the way through August 14th. We take off the week of June 29th. Again, there'll be nine full weeks. Residents and students can sign up for as many or as little weeks as they want. Registration is going to start February 15th, run through May 1st. Residents have the opportunity as well to pay up until the week their camp starts, so they're not, they don't have to pay upfront, per se. So we're really excited about this. This was kind of at the urge of a lot of our camp parents and us internally as well, wanting to make it a change and offer more of an all-inclusive camp, you know, for those working parents and families that need care throughout the summer, so we're very excited about that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Senator.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to, because Jack explained this program, I just want to thank him, I want to thank the principal at St. Thomas More and Superintendent Mark Glacca. And this was a long process to try to put together. It was a lot of work and a lot of moving parts, but I really think this is not only such a great opportunity for the kids in our city. That summer learning gap for kids is really important. You know, a lot of underprivileged kids don't really get the opportunity to have that educational component in the summer, and you could see that when they're doing these standardized tests every year. So the teachers get them at the beginning of the year, and they regress over the summer. You know, what they knew at the end of the summer, they lose some of that. So we're hoping to, you know, not only help the parents continue to work and allow them to have a full day, but also these kids and the teachers in our school district, so these kids can come back to the next grade where they left off in a good spot. It helps with our testing scores that everyone seems to look at, which I don't hold a ton of stock in, but people look at those grades of your, if you're a particular city, and they say, oh, is this a good city to live in based upon this test score? This will help with that, because these kids will come back a little farther along than they were. And again, so thank you again, I really think this is a valuable program for our community going forward.
Next up is our Service Director, Mr. Verba.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I will try to address all the questions in regards to recycling. Usually, in the middle of winter, we usually don't get too many questions on recycling, it's more about snow. But to answer Mr. Tansky's question, 754.42 tons we recycled last year, and that is an increase of 31.47 tons. I do not have the number of percentages of how many people put out recycling. That's kind of hard, because the community has quite a few seniors, and they don't put their cart out every week. So to get an actual percentage of how many residents recycle is kind of overbearing for us. We did give out 100 citations last year, or warnings for recycling. To answer your question about, every city has contamination in their recycling, it's just, it's just the norm. Obviously, the city of Cleveland has a lot more than we do. I checked with the city of Cleveland and actually where our material ends up going, and we are way below the normal contamination load for cities. So we're doing okay, but we could definitely be doing better. There is definitely contaminated materials in the loads, for sure. We are trying to, we have another education piece going to be available as soon as the weather breaks, and what we are going to do is actually stick those to the carts in the spring, where the, like I said, when the weather breaks, it'll be another information of what to recycle. Basically, everybody's trying to over-recycle, and it's not like it used to be where everything go into the container. So we have another education piece ready to go, it's just we're waiting till the weather breaks, and we'll stick that on the carts, and we'll kind of see how we go from there. Any other questions on recycling?
Thanks, John. You got it all, John. You had the numbers down. Yep.
That's what we do. That's what we do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Verba. All right, this time we'll move on with our legislation for this evening. The first two items are notifications, as I mentioned during the report on the Committee of the Whole. The first one on your agenda there for the Noteback Energized Community Grant for 34 914, we're to hold off on this until the next meeting, although there'll be a piece of legislation introduced for that. The next notification has been mentioned several times, is a donation of $1,000 from TAP Packaging and Design, and once again, we're very grateful for TAP Packaging's donation and welcome them to our community. Under legislation this evening, as ordinance 2019-53 is up for a third reading and adoption, establishing the full-time position of Economic Development Director slash City Planner with the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? Make a rec, or move that council adopt?
Circle.
To adopt, Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvire.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
The next two items are on second reading, ordinance 2020-1, promoting clean and healthy parks by enacting Section 521.101 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances, non-smoking in parks. Ordinance 2020-4, establishing the position of part-time recreation supervisor for facilities and programs. Under new legislation this evening, just one item, we hope to pass by suspension of rules. This is ordinance 2020-5, establishing the Brooklyn Summer Camp Program within the Recreation Department and repealing ordinances 2010-11 and 2014-22, and this is the program that Mr. Abruzi just mentioned. I don't think the fees were mentioned there, but the camper fees are $120 per week for the first child, and a second and third child are only $90 per week. Any other comments or questions? Are we going to suspend the rules?
Circle.
To suspend the rules, Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvire.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
To adopt, Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvire.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
This concludes our agenda for this evening. Does the mayor, council, or any other director have anything to add?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvire.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
This concludes our agenda for this evening. Does the mayor, council, or any other director have anything to add?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Chackey.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvire.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.